Okay. I'll say you'll do it after. Okay.
I just sent you pictures of Milwaukee Transit. You guys both got my pictures of Milwaukee's BRT stops.
Oh.
I just sent it to you just like 10 seconds ago. You don't have to look right now. Anyway, I just got back.
Oh, gotcha. The Pay Scan Board. We'll talk more.
I don't have Helen's.
Morning, everyone. Good to see all of you this morning. As always, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, sorry about that. I stumbled on one of the words as I was thinking about all the important things to talk about today. And I didn't, I was not happy if I stumbled on a word in the pledge, that it's not okay. I've been saying it for many years. So hearings from citizens, I think we have a few guests today, but none wanted to speak. Is that right? Okay. We always welcome citizens to come and address the board and ask questions or help us understand something that's going on. So let me talk about a few things here. I feel like I saw most of you just a couple days ago. And that's true, actually, because we had committee meetings on Thursday. And so it's great to see you again so early. We had those because many of the staff and several board members were at the APTA conference in Boston. That's the American Public Transit Association Conference. And board members Amat and Clark were there. It was a very valuable conference. And I've been to a few conferences recently, trying to understand the industry as best I can in relationship to what we're doing here in southwest Ohio. And I learn a lot, sometimes in small interactions, sometimes in big sessions, sometimes when the FDA administrator is addressing you and clearly laying out what's important to them to 3,000 people. So I can't go over all of it, but Mark Molinaro addressing us. One important thing, he clearly supports transit, clearly sees a value in it. He did emphasize safety and security and topics like that in how he is supporting transit. We had some other good contact with FTA staff, kind of impromptu in hallways. That's what's great about bringing people together to address issues and topics of concern. I, like getting down to the micro level, there was a great session on innovation where somebody from Fort Worth talked about storytime trains. And this is literally a ridership development strategy that they run in the summers. They get local leaders to read stories about trains on their train to kids. They thought they would get 100, 150 people. They were getting 450 people buying tickets to ride these trains, to the point that they had to schedule extra trains to cover the ridership. I texted Andy during that session saying, "Storytime buses sound like a great idea for us next summer." And I think we may be looking into that. No pressure, Andy. I'm sorry, what? Well, yeah, it really, the rights itself, the program. So these are, these are great things that you can hear about at these conferences, about what we can do. On the, back to a larger scale, I went to a great session about organizational models in public transit. And if you feel like we have a large board and complicated actions, I can assure you, they're much more complicated systems, much larger boards, double our size. And got a lot of great tips that I think we can talk about in the months to come, about how to think about the work that we're doing, governance and governance strategies, and keeping it simple, understanding how structure connects to outcomes. So that was great. I'm happy to give more color on that in individual conversations, if you're, if you'd like to hear about it. One of the best interactions I had was one of the more informal ones, talking to leaders of California systems on zero emission vehicles and their strategies, and some of the kind of immense challenges in cost and logistics of going to fully hydrogen systems, for example. And thanks to Bill Sproul for facilitating some of those interactions with people he knows throughout the system. So I'll stop there and give maybe Tiana and Chelsea and Andy a moment in that order, if there's anything you wanted to share from the conference that you learned.
We covered it all, but it was eye opening to just see the behind the scenes, the operational side of it. I think a game of the technical aspects. It was like open behind the curtains of what's a promise.
Yes, thank you. It was a wonderful experience. It was my first APTA conference. And a couple sessions that I really, really enjoyed, one was AI. If you know anything about me and my STEM obsession, I was really excited about the analytics to come, the guardrails that are going to need to be in place, how, you know, these softwares really need to be in alignment, and how that's going to really propel us for all these other stacked technologies that we're going to be employing, and how, how much it's going to really be a cost, you know, more cost effective, especially when it comes to the maintenance and, and how it reads and communicates. So I was really tickled about that. And then the workforce, there was a workforce session that was very interesting. So I thought that I was the only one challenged by Gen Z workers. You know, I'm, I'm a millennial, so they have a hangnail and they, you know, they want to quit, don't want to work. And it's, it's interesting that the, all industries are facing opportunities to work with that population. You know, great, great demographics, but how, how transit traditionally is set up in terms of, you know, structured with family leave and, and the hours and shifts and things like that to new populations and emerging career workers is very, very interesting to me. And, you know, especially single parents and whatnot. So that was really interesting, and I think there are a lot of pieces that we can, that we can adapt or at least help us to kind of see, see the next 10 years processes with. And Perry was there from Love on the Spectrum. Yes, I know. I was the only, only one in my row that was excited. I know, I was wondering, when they talked about the tea, I was like, I hope that she's here. And then they unveiled her, and she came out and I said, and I got a picture with Terry, with Perry. And my colleagues were like, who is that? What are you talking about? But it was great. I also learned that Bill is in fact a transit god, a deity, if you will. And that was interesting, so we just would kind of follow him and we'd be led into all places. And they touched the hem of his coat and whatnot, and it was great. It was, it was really fun. I learned, I learned, I learned so much. We've acquired new nicknames and everything. So it was a, it was, it was definitely, and then I was forced to walk by, by these, this leadership. This leadership team decided that at 410 with short legs, I should walk miles before they allowed me to use the transit system to investigate Boston. So it was great. We had a wonderful time.
Andy, I know you had comments for your final comments for the board meeting, but maybe you share a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you all covered it very, very well. Whenever we had the opportunity to learn from other systems, I always like to think about our strategic challenges, and workforce is perennial, and so always try to tee into that and see what's going on. Sometimes it's validation, when there was a workforce panel talking about all the different things they're doing on recruiting, and they're going through all the different things that they've done over the last two years to grow their operator workforce. And when you see us check that, yeah, we've done that, we've done that, we've done that. So sometimes you just take away those one, one or two little things to, to up your game, but it seems like we're on par, if not ahead of the curve, when it comes to workforce. Always pay attention to safety and what's going on in that space. But I do think fundamentally, understanding, hearing from the FDA administrator is super important to what we do, because the FDA administrator sets the tone and the emphasis when they're looking at grant awards, when they're looking at funding cycles. It's really important to know what that, what the current administration's emphasis is. And like you, I was very heartened to hear that there's strong support for public transit in what we do. So it's a matter of, you know, adjusting our strategy to make sure that we're hitting those highlights when we're asking for money, or we are, you know, supporting the cause and moving people to jobs and all those good things. So I think that was the, the icing on the, on the cake for me.
And the final comments I had are right there with what Andy's saying. Going to these conferences, talking to people, I, it's very clear to me that our leadership here, the board, staff are doing the right things, understand what's going on in the industry, and I don't think we're missing anything, right? That was one of my goals, just like, are we missing anything? Is there anything big going on that we're not seeing? And, and I don't see that, and actually I see us as out ahead, as kind of really leading the industry in many ways. And I think that's also shown by the number of people I talked to who were just eager and complimentary about our staff. So good job to all of you. All right, so let's jump into some of the business we have for today. Oh, I know we'll talk about this more, but I did have one more note. We have a lot of business, not just in the meeting today, but also in BRT in the next several weeks to come. I don't know how many meetings are scheduled, but it was a full page in small font. So, Hallie, do you want to jump in?
No, I just want to, yeah, thank you for that. I just want to remind everybody that we have the BRT open house today on the 23rd floor. It already started at nine, it's going to go until one. So encourage all of you to, you know, visit us for a few minutes.
And there's large open meetings to educate the community. There are internal meetings to work with staff at Metro, and then there are upcoming community council meetings as well. You can find most, if not all of these, on the website. I think the community council meetings are a little bit more dynamically scheduled, right? So those may not all be on there, but we're getting everything we can as we go, right?
And we should have, the schedule was printed upstairs on the 23rd floor. They're going to be, you know, they're going to have boards about the station locations, design, the traffic studies, the analysis that was done, and so on. So it's going to be pretty comprehensive coverage, and we have staff to answer any questions. So yeah, please join us upstairs afterwards.
That's for everybody here and anybody who's also listening online. Make sure you get out to these meetings, they're incredibly important for understanding a project that is changing our entire region and providing amazing transportation opportunities to our communities. Okay, now into the action items. So we have board minutes from August 26th, but then we also have board minutes from four other meetings. I mentioned in my opening comments that we are thinking about strategy, the position of the organization within the industry and our communities. So these four other meetings were small group meetings with staff and board members to go over the history and the current condition of the organization so that we can really level everybody up to engage in these discussions moving forward. So I understand that I can approve or move the approval of all minutes in one motion. So since I can do that, I'm going to move it.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. And any questions, concerns before we vote? I think this is a voice vote, or is it roll call? Voice. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say left. Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Okay, one abstention. All right, so those pass, and that means we can move right into the finance committee. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, thank you, Blake. So we had a very good finance committee meeting. And, you know, while we have some revenue that may be unfavorable to budget, there are certainly a lot of other things going on. Our expenses are lower than we anticipated, which we do like, and our sales tax is definitely trending in the right direction. So the, you know, departments have taken, you know, a lot of attention in making sure that we track that and that, that that's, that that's something that we keep on top of, especially in our predictions and whatnot. So I'm, I'm really excited to see that. And then also, we had some, we also discussed healthcare. At the end of this year, of course, we are going to be, that'll be concluding in that for our medical plans for people, and so we are going to have a new plan that we've looked at and feel good about, based on the market. And so with that, I'm going to actually turn over to, turn over to Tim if he'd like to add anything else to that.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and I'll just wait to the, later on in the agenda when it comes back to me.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
No problem. And then I'd like to propose, if we could look at the healthcare plan. We approved it in committee, and so in terms of action items, I'd like for a move, a motion to that we, that we move forward in this acceptance. Can I get a second? Thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Do we need a roll call vote?
I will know right before we vote, and I do support moving forward with it, that it is a nearly $2 million increase in the budget. But staff has assured that this is budgeted, or will be budgeted and is handled and is part of kind of anticipated growth. So I just want everybody to be sure that they're aware of this increase in health insurance coverage.
Right, that does trickle down to families paying about an additional $10 a month. That's what that would, that's what we have with this plan. All right.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
All right, we'll move forward with that, thank you. And we do have a proposed resolution for, for an approval of appointment to Ohio Transit Risk Pool. This would be for, this would be for the, I think the C, the CFO.
CEO will elect me as an alternate.
CEO, yes, that would elect you as the alternate trustee to the Ohio Transit Risk Pool. And this would serve just in the absence, or rather serve and vote in the absence of the voting trustee, which is our CEO. So I'd like to move for a motion on that, and can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is that a voice vote as well? All right, is there any discussion, further discussion?
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That concludes.
Thank you very much. Ruling right into planning and ops, Ms. Metz?
Yeah, we had a good planning and ops meeting, covered a couple of important topics. First, on the ridership, some headwinds on ridership in the previous month, but it seems like we've had some good first couple of weeks of September, and so eager to see what happens there, and some of the sort of root causes of the impact on ridership this month. Good Metro rapid update around the role of BRT as it relates to transit oriented development, and specifically what Metro's role in that as we go forward with this new initiative. Eager to continue to hear more about that and engage in that process. Also, a good and important conversation about the CPS started school year and how things have gone as we initially get into it. And I know we'll continue to have those conversations in future meetings, especially as we hone in more on sort of use rates for, for students. So important conversation there to keep following. And then we had two relatively straightforward action items. And then we had two relatively straightforward action items, both of which were sole source. And so they're on the consent agenda. I'm happy to turn it over to John or others if people want to talk about those. But if not, then I will move approval of the consent agenda. All right, I think roll call.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith, sorry.
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
That's all I got?
Great. Thank you very much. Well, that's a great thing. And thanks for noting the, the ridership. I know staff is looking into this a little bit more deeply and hopefully we'll find out more. Certainly a number of days with schools and, and those kind of explanations for some of the variants in August. But we do want to make sure we're watching ridership closely. A key element to the long-term service to our communities, but also the financial abilities of the organization to, to cover what we're doing. So thanks for, you know, staying on top of that to everybody in planning and ops. Okay, so we have financial results. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. We'll go through these kind of quick. Thank you, Natalie, right there. We'll start off first with the revenue for the month. We came in at 14.4 million, which was slightly unfavorable to budget by a little over $100,000, largely driven by the fair revenue. And that was offset by positive CPS revenue along with some fuel tax reimbursement we received, higher investment income, along with sales tax performing a little bit better than we had budgeted. On the expense side, those were unfavorable or we spent more than we had expected. Primarily that was driven by some additional advertising that we had, which is timing along with, as I mentioned during the committee meetings last week, additional spend on Kings Island just due to the volume and the uptick in, in participation, which from a finance perspective, you hate to see anything unfavorable, but that's kind of good news to see the, the community and our, our family here at Metro enjoying the family days that we had on, on two days. We also had, as the still troublesome piece with the, the maintenance and parts being a little unfavorable. And then while it's a little hidden here, you can see the, the wages were a little favorable, but that is kind of misleading in that some items that we had budgeted to go in wages and benefits are now down in the other line. But all in all, you know, we'll see it when we go eventually to the next page, how this is year to date, we look at it on a year to date basis as well because of the timing issues. You net those two numbers together, we had a negative operating capital contribution of about $257,000, which was unfavorable to budget by about $588,000. Next page, Natalie? This is the page I like to look at on the right-hand side, kind of taking away some of the timing differences that we have seen and focusing really on the year-to-date figures that we have here. You look here at the revenue line, total revenue line came in about half a million dollars less than we had budgeted. Looking down at the bottom with our expenses, those came in about a million dollars less than we had expected. And so because they're going the different directions, year-to-date, we are about half a million dollars favorable or performing better than our budget. So year-to-date, our operating capital contribution is $2.7 million compared to a budget of $2.18 million. And when you look at that growth there, we're $534,000 greater than our budget, which is some great news. And looking at it year-to-date, you know, we're a full $820,000 greater than last year, which is 43% greater. But focusing a little bit on the, the revenue and expenses year-to-date, you can see on our, on our revenue line, that line item is growing on a year-to-date basis compared to last year at about 6.4% greater than last year. The total expenses are growing as well, but those are growing at a, at a smaller percentage at 5.7%. So, you know, as long as our top-line revenue or, you know, the total revenue line is growing at a higher percentage than our expenses, that, you know, results in some favorable outcome for us. So good news there. Also year-to-date, I want to highlight and we'll cover this a little bit more in the next page, is that we have five months of actuals here on our sales tax. So looking at our sales tax line, you can see we're $302,000 greater year-to-date than we were compared to our budget, which is some great news and also favorable to last year. And Natalie, please go to the next page. And this is our standard sales tax look and just really want to focus on the first five months. You know, we performed well compared to last year and also to our budget. But the one thing I really want to point out is the year-to-date compared to last year, we're about $2.9 million or 6% greater than we were at this point last year. So good news. We continue to monitor our sales tax with that being the, the largest revenue item that we have. But we, we monitor this all the time and we're seeing some favorable trends, which is some good news. Any questions from the group here? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Andy, would you like to fill us in on the progress and priorities?
Sure. Thank you. Just a couple of quick updates. As mentioned before, and you see on the, the sheet here, our next round of BRT open houses, there's one today going on on the 23rd floor, as Hala had mentioned. These are the dates and locations for the next four. Again, just underlined, we encourage folks to get out. We're about 30% design with BRT and this is a really critical stage to make sure that we get input on the specific locations and the specific alignments before we start to fine tune that, that engineering design. You already talked a little bit about APTA and the industry. Item number three here is very interesting. Our Director of Learning, Ben Cole, with, working with John Ravazio and Pat Giblin, our CIO, engaged with Miami University and their Center for Analytics and Data Science Program. We're offering folks that work here at Metro a three-course program focused on storytelling with data, introduction to AI and data viz. They will actually get a certification after they go through this process. It's an incredible partnership and, you know, one of the things that this board has challenged us to do is to use data and to use it in a meaningful way to solve problems. And we think that this can happen in every single department within our organization. So we're really excited about this partnership. This is our second cohort and we've had outstanding results from the first. So we're really excited about that partnership. You all know that part of issue seven was ensuring that the Everybody Rides Metro program continued full force and bringing that back essentially. It continues to thrive. We have over 100 partners. We're on pace to use all of the funds allocated within the budget for ERM, but we're also not stopping. This is kind of in our DNA now. Just because we did it once doesn't mean we're going to stop doing it. We're having an open house here. The dates and locations are here, September 30th, 8:30 AM at the Holloman Center in Avondale. And we're inviting existing partners to come and network and also potential new partners to come and learn about the ERM program. Continues to be a bright spot. Lastly, I'll, I'll talk again about Washington. We right now are in a critical phase with respect to looming government shutdown. So our eyes are on that and how it could potentially affect applications and processing grants and things like that. Typically, we have been relatively unscathed by, by shutdowns. We aren't using our federal dollars necessarily on a month-to-month basis. So we have some flexibility in when we recognize that revenue. But nonetheless, we need to keep an eye on it. We have a $350 million BRT project. We're trying to move through the federal government process. So all eyes on that with our partners here and in Washington. Another critical thing that's going on is the five-year surface transportation bill needs to be reauthorized. Traditionally, we've seen that being extended by a year or two or sometimes three. But we think that there's going to be an attempt to, or an effort to update that plan with new policy and new regulations that will affect our business. So we're tracking that. And the third leg of that is just annual appropriations. They still have to appropriate dollars for fiscal '26 and that affects our formula funds. So there's a lot that's going on in Washington right now that will impact Metro and we're keeping our eyes glued on that. And since I have the, the, the mic, I'll take the pleasure to, to mention a couple of other things. You kind of talked about when we were in, in Boston with staff. I think that we have, we kind of have the dream team here when it comes to our executive leadership team. When you look at folks who are in these respective disciplines throughout the country, our executive leadership team are leaders in their disciplines and we're super happy to have them on our team. I think you'll also see when you go through what's going on in the industry, our senior leadership team and then our technical teams are often some of the best, best in the industry and we have them here at Metro, which makes us really, really strong. And the second piece of that is the board. You know, you mentioned Blake that we went through the, the baseline for our strategic plan update and the amount of engagement and thoughtfulness and perspective that you all provided going through that has been incredible. Worked with a lot of boards over a lot of years and you all are really, really helping this organization think very boldly about having, you know, the best transit system in the country and you're a huge part of that. So thank you for your engagement and we look forward to the next steps in that planning process. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to note that that ERM open house is very cleverly scheduled next Tuesday morning. So maybe many of you have gaps in your schedules on Tuesday mornings because of our meetings. And so you might be able to come and attend. Please do if you can. BRT meetings, actually Natalie, can you scroll up to that just so I can note that real quick for anybody who's listening online? Scroll on up a little bit to item one, is it on there? Yeah, so September 25th, September 29th, September 30th, October 1st. Those are all important BRT project meetings. So go online, find those, attend them. This is incredibly important point in the BRT project for understanding where stops are, what this is going to look like as we move forward with the project. So please attend. We need to hear from you. We need to hear from the community and get that input as we progress. And I think that's all we have for the agenda today unless there's any new business from anyone. Hearing none, I'll see you next month. We are adjourned.